Okay, welcome everybody here today. It is the regular scheduled county commissioners meeting in the commission chambers. It is December twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Meeting begins at three P M. We'll start off with a prayer by Lysia Cawthor and a pledge by Ty.
Wait till I get the microphone, please. Yes, thank you for the mic. Thank you, and make sure it's on.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we are so very grateful to be able to gather together today as community members and elected officials. We ask you to please be with those today that are making decisions that pertain to our county, that they'll be able to have the best interests of the people that live in our community. We are grateful for those that protect our, our lives and our community and ask you to please be with them, that they'll be watched over and protected. Bless us that we will be able to stand united and that we can have positivity. We're grateful for the many things that thou blesses us with and for this great country and community that we have to live in. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Ty and Lysia. Forgot to remind everybody, please turn off your cell phones and make sure that you've signed in back there in the book. So, uh, Mike reporting the warrants.
Oh, we gotta do the minutes.
Oh, yeah, well, okay, never mind. I'm trying to hurry things up. Approval of minutes of the twenty, November twenty second, special meeting and November twenty seventh, work session and November twenty eighth, regular meeting. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I believe I did have some corrections, but I'm trying to look because I wrote notes, but I didn't write to which one. I believe it was the work session that I had some corrections on. That would be the twenty second, no, twenty seventh. I think you'd put in there that there were some board appointments and that we needed to give to the governor, the Utah Water Conservancy, and it said three names, but it was per vacancy. I thought I said per vacancy is what we were supposed to, per vacancy is what we were supposed to provide. So that one, and then, um, I've got proof of easement for three on. You got that one? Okay, and then there was one that said, um, it was like on map in nineteen eighty six and eighty nine. It didn't designate what map on that one. I don't know what, if you knew what map, but it just said on map. So I was wondering if we needed to designate that. And I don't know if you corrected the name Gloria Clark and corrected Madonna instead of La Donna? Okay. And then down in where it talks about Airbnb and our VRBOs, I think it just said BNB. It didn't say air in front of that. So, and on the clinician, um, it says it would be paid back, but I think he also stated it would be pro rate, paid back, prorated. So just adding that. Okay, um, one more thing. On this CJC presentation, there were exams can be done here. It said an assessment poll, is it poll or pool? I didn't know if that was correct, just checking on that.
I just said it was a poll.
A poll, okay. That's what I just was asking if that was, but that was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or motions?
No, with those corrections, I would make a motion to approve of the minutes with the corrections as presented.
Have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay.
Chairman, on those same lines, I'd like to make a change publicly on the bonding hearing. We have it as January eighth. It is actually January ninth at three o'clock.
On the proposed bond that we had last week, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, all right, Mike.
Okay, warrants from November thirtieth, amount of three hundred fifty seven thousand two hundred and eight dollars and sixty two cents. There was two that was, uh, out of the ordinary. Cemetery bought a Kubota, uh, uniloder, not, track hole, little small. Whatever, it's Kubota.
Skids, your, uh, track hole.
Skids not one of those.
No, I think it's called.
Excavator.
Maybe that's it.
That's what it was. Seventy five thousand eight hundred ninety dollars, and then we made our payment to the, to Caterpillar for the excavator payment on yet.
And did you say that was as of what date?
November thirtieth. This was last Thursday's run.
Okay, thank you.
And there was no claims today.
All righty. All right, tax matters.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Trevor Morrow with the Assessors Office. We are requesting a refund of taxes in the amount of four thousand six seventy five twenty three, and this is for tax years twenty two and twenty three, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, for a business personal property account. The account number is five, six, seven, one, and it is because the business owner, who is also the leasy, um, paid for an asset that was also claimed by the lesor, by the bank, and so it had been double taxed.
Okay, any questions?
I have no questions. I'd make a motion that we approve the refund as presented in the amount of four thousand six hundred seventy five dollars, twenty three cents.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you. Mike, let me just hand it, well, no.
I've gotta give it to Ty.
Commissioners, this is a maintenance agreement on our copy machine in my office. It's been with Rocky Mountain, uh, I can't remember what it is, for sixty months. They have been now sold out to Dex Imaging, so this picks up the balance. It's like thirty four months that are left of that contract and request permission for you sign it to continue the maintenance and service on yet.
For how much longer would it be?
Let me get my glasses on here. I didn't bring that one. It's like thirty four months left of the original sixty month contract or agreement on it.
Why do we have to reapprove it then if it was a sixty month?
Well, it was sixty month, but they've been, Rocky Mountain's been bought out by Dex Imaging now is providing that instead of, so this is for the balance of that.
Oh, so we're just basically transferring it to a new company?
To a new provider.
Okay, and continuing that for the remainder of the contract?
Correct.
Okay, you don't know, did you say the amount?
It's per copy.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
I would make a motion that we continue, approve the Dex Imaging maintenance agreement as a continuation due to being bought out or transferred?
They bought out Rocky Mountain.
Okay, Rocky Mountain.
Can't remember what the name of it was.
The previous company?
Yeah, previous company.
That we had a contract with. So I would make that motion for the remainder of that contract.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Corey, where do you need me, son? I'll just give it right, right?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Corey Auger. I'm with the Utah Forest Street Fire State Lands, and I serve as the fire warden for U N in Daggett County. What I have before you today is the annual participation commitment for twenty twenty four, looking into next year, and this is a value of ninety six thousand and seventy six dollars. And just for your knowledge, this is six thousand sixty two dollars less than, than the previous year. And what this is, is this is part of the cooperative agreement between Forest Street Fire State Lands and the county, which provides, or helps provide, uh, wild line fire suppression in the event of a catastrophic wildfire that could devastate a community, a county, a city, whatever, uh, and, you know, monetarily. So this is kind of part of the program that is kind of more or less an insurance policy for that. Now, this ninety six thousand, seventy six dollars is not necessarily a cash value that is due. It can be done in like kind services, and this is all handled under the fire district. So Jeremy Raymond and the UniFire Suppression Special Service Districts, uh, they account for this, they add this into their budget every year to make sure that it is properly covered. But there are mitigation crews that go out and the firefighters that can go out and do mitigation products for individuals in the community to reduce the risk of fire wildfire in those high potential areas. All of that can be counted as, as sweat equity towards this when they report their numbers, so. And if you have any other questions, I'll.
No, and you, uh, you need an approval from us? Is that what you need to?
Yeah, so even though this is covered, technically, the fire district takes this, the agreement is with the county because the, the fire district is not a taxing entity, and it's just weird how, how that is, so it has to fall back on signature. It's just an acknowledgement, pretty much.
All righty, any questions, comments, motions?
I'd make a motion that we approve the Forest Street Fire State Lands annual participation and commitment in the amount of ninety six thousand seventy six dollars for the year of twenty twenty four.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Corey. Danny, you need to open this up, or do we just need to, how do you?
Um, you need to open it up and then, if you want to read it, you can. If you want me to read it, I'm happy to.
John said he's got her.
Okay.
Did you open the first public hearing?
Well, it's, it's not listed as a, oh, it does, as a first public hearing.
Right.
So he'll read that first, and then after he gives the explanation to the public, then he'll open it up for a public comment or suggestions.
I have a question. We're CDBG, is this because of the, is this the M B A?
No.
No.
Well, then, that can just, isn't that just the chairman?
He delegated it to me.
Oh, just an elected official, any elected official has to read the script that U Bag provided to us, so.
All right, this is Community Development Block Grant, first public hearing, December fifth, two thousand twenty three. Welcome to everyone in attendance. The purpose of this public hearing is to supply citizens with pertinent information and receive input on the Community Development Block Grant Program and to allow for discussion of possible applications for the twenty twenty four funding cycle. Our region received approximately two hundred and forty three thousand, seven hundred and forty five dollars in competitive funding. There are a variety of projects that are eligible under the CB, CDBG program. Some of the projects are acquisition of real property, acquisition and construction of public works, code enforcement, demolition, removal of architectural barriers, provision of public service, requiring matching funds, I'm sorry, required matching funds, relocation payments, planning activities, administration of federal programs, housing assistance, economic development, housing activities. Number three, the community development funding must be used for activities that will meet the national objective of benefit to low slash moderate income individuals. In addition to low slash moderate, there will, there are two other ways to meet the national objective. They are the prevention or elimination of slum or bright and urgent health and welfare. If any proposed community development project results in displacement of low slash moderate income individuals, then provisions will be made to assist in funding a new housing. Five, in the past, U N A County has received grant funding from CDBG for projects that include Meals on Wheels vehicles, Golden Age Center kitchen equipment and construction. Six, does anyone have questions or comments or any other suggestions?
Okay, do we need to open it up for public comment?
Now you're opening up the public hearing.
Okay, well, okay, we're gonna go ahead and open up now for a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, first public hearing. So if we have anybody that wants to come forth and make comments on that, I guess this time we can, or now, if not, do we need to move out of?
You could close the public hearing.
And then go out and then make the motion to accept it, is that okay?
Before you close it, though, look, sorry. They like to see some comments, so I was emailed a comment, so since someone spoke, I'll just say that. Sam Passy at the library asked me about a bookmobile, if we could use the funding, if we could apply for that to have basically a library, you know, an van go around to neighborhoods to serve the public. I spoke to U Bag, and I was told that this is a targeted grant, so it is only eligible for low to moderate income areas. So we have to do surveys, so if we apply for any sort of project, we'd have to have a survey for that specific neighborhood or street. If we were doing a sidewalk, those houses would have to fall into that category to low to moderate income. So it's not likely, but that window has passed for the twenty twenty four year. We have to submit a notice of intent to conduct an income survey by November first. So next year, if we want to apply for something like that, we will get with the state, ask if that's eligible, but it's kind of in a gray area. It would have to only serve that population.
And we do this every year?
Not every year.
We receive funds and we have to allocate them?
No, so the, the, you went to basin, so U Bag gets a chunk of money, and then they use a portion of that for their own projects, and then what's remaining is eligible for, for us to apply for competitively. So this two hundred and forty three thousand dollars, Manila City, Daggett County, U N A County, Vernal City, only cities and counties are eligible, but we can sponsor entities. So, um, Meals on Wheels, we, the Golden Age Center was not eligible, so last year we applied for them on their behalf, and we managed the, the money for that. So, um, no, it's not guaranteed, it's available to apply for, it's competitive, and we don't get it, it's not even available every year. Like, a couple of years ago, there was no money, so they make the announcement each year.
Okay, so does anybody have any other projects? I know when I was at the city, I believe we did some projects for, um, low income housing, um, and affordable housing type things. We repaired roofs, I think we did insulation or windows, you know, we did some things to repair and upgrade them. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm behind on this one, and, um, I think I'll put it on the calendar for next year, just in case there's funds, then maybe we discuss beforehand some projects and some things we would like to use this money for, if there's any money eligible or available.
Yeah, we should do that. It's a very tight window, like, they made the announcement the middle of October, and then we have to have our notice of intent by November first. So if we have, if we can get some ideas put together this coming year, then we'll be ready.
So right now, we really don't have any projects.
Unless, so, we can still meet that requirement if, so, like, Golden Age Centers, any senior centers are assumed LMI. So if we, the county building, for example, if we, uh, make ADA upgrades, that's automatically eligible. So there are things that we wouldn't have to conduct surveys for if they fall into a different LMI category, right?
Well, I have a project right now, but it's not, I don't think it's far enough along that we could, we'll do it possibly for next year.
Okay.
But I don't know, I'll talk to you about it more maybe with the other department, uh, cause that's just an idea that came in my head while we were sitting here, but it's something that I think could qualify in it.
If it's for ADA, you can, I mean, you can say it right now, we can, if you want to, for discussion, and I can ask U Bag about it, if it's eligible, or we can just meet later.
Well, I want to look into, and I've mentioned it to the other two commissioners, um, creating the north main entrance ADA accessible. So I would like to look into that.
Okay, perfect.
It would really help order us out if we did.
Yes, so that is a project I can think of that I would like to propose.
Excellent idea, and I think I'm surprised we haven't been kind of forced to do it by now.
Well, we've, we've got the two, the east and the west end that do meet ADA, but that's very difficult for people. I think we should make our main entrance ADA accessible.
Yeah.
So that's something I would propose.
Okay.
And we can try to get bids or whatever, if we can still do that this year.
Okay, I'll work on it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, or suggestions, then I guess we will adjourn the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Close the hearing, and then we'll need a motion to approve this or not, or just is that?
Are there, there's no motion yet.
All righty, all right, we have the need for board appointments today. I think there's three, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, not ten, four?
Four.
Okay, we have four, uh, uh, board appointments, uh, one, two, three, four. You want to start off, uh?
I have, yeah, I can start off on the planning board, but I would also like to, I know that some members that have applied for these boards have been attending some of these meetings, and I just wanted to make it clear when the, it closes, we have to advertise for the special service district boards for thirty days, or at least advertise and not close it for thirty days. So those advertisements have been extended for the U N A County, or the U N A Special Service District One. It will not close till, hmm, it's got December twentieth. It's, anyway, I'll double check, but it's gonna be more like December twentieth when that one will close, so we will not be able to appoint until that thirty day period. And the Transportation Special Service District Board will not close till January second. The, so I just wanted to bring that up here.
Okay.
But then I was, I, uh, work with the Planning Commission, and so I would like to appoint, request, I don't know how you put these names to the commission, to appoint Craig Nebiker. He is serving on the board right now, and I ask that he be reappointed for a three year term. All three of these people would be serving a three year term from January of twenty four, January one of twenty four, to December thirty first of twenty eight. Twenty six, excuse me, I wrote twenty eight, I meant twenty six, thanks, Deanna. So it's January first of twenty twenty four to December thirty first of twenty twenty six. It's a three year term, and Craig Nebiker, who is currently serving, Clayton Thacker, he was an alternate, and we will be moving him into, I'm requesting that he be moved into the regular Planning Commission Board Member, and Travis Allen.
Okay, any questions, comments, or motions?
I do appreciate that we actually had more, more applicants than we had positions to fill. This is very nice, I am very appreciative of that. I'm glad to see the community wanting to be involved. We did have five applications for these three positions, so thank you. I appreciate that, and I'm appreciative to those that are willing to serve on these boards.
Okay.
Yes, they're all the, the three year term from that January to December of twenty six.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those appointments.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. All right, the next one will be the tri-county mental health and substance abuse. One member, term limit is four years.
I would recommend Michael Wilson for a term starting January one of twenty five, going through December thirty first of twenty nine.
Did you mean twenty four?
Or twenty four, that's where I messed up. I don't know why. I want to be twenty five already.
So December thirty first of twenty nine?
Eight.
Twenty eight? That's a four year?
Yep, four year term.
That's a five year.
That's a four year.
For tri-county mental health, it's four years.
So it'd be twenty seven, December of twenty seven.
Four and four is eight, yep.
Well, but I mean.
You'll keep me straight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, January first of twenty four through December thirty first of twenty seven.
Okay.
Mike Wilson.
All right, any questions? Okay, but look, uh, a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve Michael Wilson to be the member on the men, tri-county mental health and substance abuse board from January first of twenty four to December thirty first of twenty twenty seven.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, we have one for the weed board.
Yes, sir, Chair, I'd recommend that David Gurr to serve from January first of twenty four through December thirty first of twenty seven.
Okay, any questions, comments, or motions?
I would make a motion that we approve David Gurr as the board appointment for the weed board from January first of twenty four to December thirty first of twenty seven.
Have a motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. All right, we have one for the mosquito abatement.
On that, Chair, I'd make a, a motion for Valdean Bell to serve from the term of December first, twenty fourth through December thirty first, twenty fourth, that would be to carry out the, the vacated term due to a death, and then I would fully appoint him, again, January first, twenty five through December thirty first and twenty seven.
Sorry, I lost you on that one, so he's filling a vacancy?
He's filling a vacancy through the end of the month.
Okay.
And then he'll do the, his, uh, the term, January one, twenty five, or twenty four, I don't know why I can't get that through my head, through December thirty first of twenty seven.
Seven, okay.
All right.
I, I think he said that was a motion, so I would second that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Anything?
I, I'd like to point out that there is an opening on the tri-county board of health for one member for a term of three years where we had no applicants at all. So it's open, if anybody wants to be on it, by all means, apply quickly.
Yes, and, and I, I missed one board that does not close till December twentieth, that is the U N to Water Conservancy District Board. So there are some applicants, but we encourage anyone to apply, and that is when it will close, is December twentieth. So we will not be able to appoint those boards that I mentioned earlier, plus this one, until after that date.
Okay, any public comments? Come on up, J C.
J C Brewer. Does anybody watch Fox News but me? Then you'll know what I'm talking about. Twice in the last three or three months, I've expressed considerable concern here to this commit, or to this, to this board about the, the practice of Communist China buying U S assets, soil specifically, farmland specifically. After a little research, quite a lot of talking to some people, I discovered that the state of Utah had already passed legislation prohibiting that in this state. I passed out a copy of House Bill one eighty six sometime back to the members of this board, and, uh, on that subject. Utah passed, the House and the Senate passed Bill one eighty six, makes it illegal for any foreign entity to buy soil or the rights to land, water, or minerals in the state of Utah. So I wanted to move that another step further. I wanted to see that done in the United States, period, in the U S Congress. Started working on that little project. Wasn't having a lot of luck until I started listening to a governor from the state of South Dakota Sunday morning. Her name's Kristy Noem. Kristy Noem laid up some ass, some numbers, she talked for probably ten or fifteen minutes on Fox News there. She put up some numbers that ought to scare anybody in this room to death, the infiltration of Communist China into this country. Couple of the numbers I'll relay to you now, just to show you what I'm talking about, is acres of farmland purchased to date by Communist China in America. A little to the north side of three hundred and eighty five thousand acres in the vicinity of our military bases and our airports. The other one that just, just really opened my eyes was the number of Chinese men, males, military aged men, not women, not kids, nothing. Military aged men from China that have crossed our southern border in the past administration, the last three, like, three years and a month, a little to the north of three hundred and eighty, or thirty five thousand eight hundred men. That is the Communist Army in our country today, folks. Anybody that's got any doubts about that, they need to start looking into what's happening at our borders, our colleges, on tick tock. That country is in, can't conquer the U S, they can't outproduce us, so they're buying us, just as sure as we're sitting here. Now, Kristy Noem said that someone, and I didn't get the name, was introducing a bill to Congress this year prohibiting the sale of America's primary assets that I just listed. prohibiting the sale of America's primary assets that I just listed nationwide. And she was asking for support by anybody who has any contact or influence or interaction with our congressmen, our representatives from all the states, all districts, everybody who, that we talk to, anybody in this room, in this board, it doesn't matter. She's looking for support for the person that is introducing that bill to Congress this year. I didn't catch his name. This morning on Fox News, the governor of the state of Oklahoma was on Fox News. He tells us that he has just sent a letter to Congress in support of Kristi Noem's proposal, and in support of whoever it is that's introducing the legislation to the Congress this year. A letter to Congress with seventeen governors' signatures on it. Seventeen people that have signed that, pledging support for his concern on the same issue. China buying our farmland. China buying our country. Now, I know you can't answer my questions. You may not even have the answers. I kind of doubt it. I've got two questions. Both of them concerning our governor. When House Bill one eighty-six was passed last May third, goes to the governor for a signature. Did Governor Cox sign that bill or veto it?
He signed it.
My other, he did sign it?
He signed it March thirteenth, but it went into effect in May. It went into effect May third.
March thirteenth. My second question. Is his name one of the governors that signed that bill for the, for the governor in Oklahoma? Is his name on that letter? Anybody know that?
I do not know that.
It wasn't on the news. I don't know. I'm not at a level that I get to talk to the governors. I'm not at a level I get to talk to the mayors, much less the governors. But folks, if anybody's got the answer to them two questions, the answers to them two questions are going to determine my vote and my extended family's vote or support come Election Day, when our governor is up for reelection. This is a subject that has become very near and dear to me. And I'm still trying to figure out who's supporting me and who's not. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? All right. Come on up front and say your name.
Oh, you have to come up--
Yeah, come up to the mic.
Okay, Cindy Scott. I have a question. When you're talking about the boards, I thought when they set up Special District One, that the Transportation Board was part of it. Is, did it, the Transportation Board never go into USDD one?
It was never dissolved.
It was never dissolved, but they did, some of the board members went into SSD one.
Okay, so is it still a standalone one?
We did pass a resolution to make it a standalone, which changed what it had previously been, which was part of USSD one. Because that's, they did, I believe, a resolution to make it part of the rec, the transportation and impact mitigation was supposed to become USSD one. But because of some legislative issues, transportation was not able to be dissolved and put in there.
So it's its own humanity still.
And then we, we decided as a commission to leave it a standalone district, so we had to do a resolution. And we did that to keep it a standalone district.
Okay, that was my question.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, John?
I'd make a motion.